Commissioner's work session from Wednesday, June twenty sixth, two thousand and nineteen. A review of work session discussion meeting minutes.
I had no corrections or additions.
I will move to the department head's report.
Why?
All right, solicitor's report? I'm sorry, Tim. No, he's here just probably answered questions we're gonna have.
Just keeping an eye on the weather for the Baptist Friday. I gotta reach out, I got a quote on a tent to cover the stage. It's a bit my five hundred dollars ballpark. I'm gonna let him know by today whether it'll affect our lighting that we traditionally put out and all that kinda stuff. So it's, you know, right now, it's a forty percent chance of rain. And it's between two o'clock and six, is what they're saying. So I'm trying to kinda salvage the event the best I can. I think you go and hide the weather out. Have to make your calls after this. I think we're gonna give it a go, but increase our cost by giving that stage cover.
You know, maybe you wanna try and talk to Eric Brewer. He has a direct contact with the National Weather Association, so maybe they have additional information on that.
Taking the call off the bad button.
Mail it down is gonna be what we're trying to do.
The predictions, yeah.
We're prepared, we've got, uh, looks like staff is there. Everything else is ready to fall in place. It's just not an issue, it's given us this little love to us again. We've been battling it all year.
Are you gonna have water again this year?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep, there'll be, uh, twenty cases, I think, is what we have.
And you have a food shop or something?
Two food shops, one shade ice truck. We've got a lemonade, uh, an iced tea stand. Torzen will be there, then Huntington response will be there. I'm gonna fill up that hell, if you will, along that line. But planning for a higher, larger crowd, I figured adding a food truck. And the ice cream was difficult. They dominated it last year, Huntington did, and it was just difficult to keep her melting. So I figured we'd scope the vendor that had the capacity to keep it in a better condition. So we just, we want that direction. And Big Snow was happy to step in and run their shade ice, so hopefully this is there.
You didn't have any problems with parking last year, did you?
No.
I didn't see any.
No, we actually, it was a lot better. I was a little concerned about it because we never parked that venue before. I'm gonna go up tomorrow afternoon, I'm gonna draw down parking lines so we can manage the field and manage what we anticipate coming. I don't have Friday swim night going on because I'm gonna use the whole parking lot. We've got the sheriff coming out, they've got, uh, three, maybe four deputies that drive traffic. We've got, uh, I believe, four public work employees that are gonna help do the parking and all that side. So we've got fairly well, I'm film confident.
Okay.
Any other department heads or none? Solicitor?
We met with the IRS last week and are still working through the process of trying to exonerate the taxes. The lien has been lis- lifted, uh, however, the penalties still remain. So we're looking to get a letter out this week and then get a response back from the IRS when, or if they're going to abate any or all of those taxes. We did get a, um, order from the judge regarding the reassessment case. The county is being, uh, court ordered to have a contract in place by January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty for the reassessment, with the reassessment to take effect in two thousand and twenty-three tax bills. So the next step is going to be, and I've already reached out to Wayne to sort of start to put together and, and RFP and look to, uh, find when entities are interested in coming in and providing a quote to the county in order to do this. We do have, uh, six months, but if we find something earlier, there's nothing stopping us from getting a contract earlier if we can. However, it's probably gonna be, uh, a pretty big undertaking from, um, um, not only finding the company, but also trying to figure out the financial aspect of it as well, too. So as we get some more information on that, uh, we'll let you know. But that's what we're looking at, January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, is when the contract has to be in place and the tax bills, the new tax bills will be sent out in the two thousand and twenty-three year. We did meet with Constellation Energy yesterday. They are here in the county today, or yesterday, today, and tomorrow during their initial assessments of the buildings. They're going to be obtaining utility bills from the county, um, and also meeting with county directors, who was Dan, uh, quite a bit in order to get access to the buildings. And then what they're hoping, what they will have is by the fall, a proposal on options that the county can consider as far as, uh, projects to hopefully get some energy efficient, uh, energy efficiency into the buildings that will lower the utility bills. So they will be around and, and meeting with various department staffs over the coming months. And then moving through the resolution list for tomorrow, we have sixteen resolutions that are listed, just a couple of highlights. Number two, this is consistent with what we've been doing to evacuation for the probation office in, in Alacqua. This is an agreement for them to use that building. Number three through six are exonerations. Number eleven is an extension of a contract for providing guardianship services for citizens over the age of sixty here in, in the county. It extends that contract until two thousand and twenty. And then number sixteen is for Susquehanna Consulting. This is for the work that they've been doing with the IRS issues. It is a contract not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for the assistance that they've been providing payroll, HR, and the law department through that process. That's all that I have to report on for today.
Any questions for the solicitors?
Fine, just so the public knows that because of the tax assessment, we've known about it for quite some time, and we, as a board, have done our due diligence and we have gone to different counties that have recently gone through reassessment. We've looked into different firms and, um, talked to them about pros and cons and things. So, um, leading up to all this, this is not gonna be the first that we've taken a look at this. I wanna just let everybody know that we've, we've done our due diligence and included our law department, our assessment office, um, purchasing. And so we're kind of ready to go with this.
Yeah, I think really the only thing we haven't discussed was the financial aspect from the companies that we talked to and stuff. We never really put a bid out or anything.
Yeah, we haven't done it officially as far as soliciting or submitting bids, and that will be part of the process here over the next six months to speak with the company, see what the options are as far as financing, to see what the exact cost is going to be.
And I met, uh, Constellation Energy in the hall yesterday and asked them what facilities that they believe are going to have the most, uh, luck in to, uh, find efficiencies. And they said that they're just initially beginning their, their quest to kind of look at all of our buildings. But, um, looking at the, the jail and the nine-one-one and the human services building, I mean, there's all, we've talked about this in, in work session many times, the different, um, problems that each of those buildings uniquely have, uh, that need to be fixed. So it'll be interesting what they, what they have to say. The assessment, um, three through six, are those just general exonerations?
Yes.
Um. Okay.
And to sort of go back with Constellation, one of the other thing that they mentioned also is well, the ice arena. Um, that that is something that they would look at to see if there's anything that could be done, done there as well, too. So they have a list of approximately seventeen buildings that the county owns. Some buildings are bigger than others, but they're gonna work their way through all those and give, give us some feedback on, on options.
Does that include magistrate buildings?
Yeah, so that's why, the, the list is a little bigger than what you think.
Yeah.
Uh, but obviously the magistrate buildings are nowhere the size of what the courthouse or the jail.
Well, I was talking to them about the LED lighting. I mean, whenever our light bulbs go out, the DPW has, um, changed them to LEDs. So it's, we're in the process of doing some things that are helping. And, uh, from the last meeting minutes, did we pull the ordinance for camping at Brady's Run by chance?
Well, we didn't pull the ordinance, um, but I had a conversation with Tim and then I looked at some minutes. I was unable to find, um, the reason behind.
No camping.
Right, now, now I have some ideas of who I can speak to that were around back then. In the meantime, Tim and I spoke and, um, I, I believe, I, I know that we currently allow certain, um, we allow people to come in and request, you know, hey, we, uh, spend the night in the park, we're having an event. Boy Scouts maybe might be an example or one. And I think for the time being, it's, it's that group.
Yeah, the horse association, what was that called? Do you remember? Okay.
Horse.
Yeah, the, the horse people. If, if, if they, um, wish to have an, an overnight event, um, I just speak with Tim and he'll have you put in a formal request and, um, we can, we can deal with it on a, an instant by instant basis.
Is they, uh, it, it was really seemed to be that they wanted to have, as a controlled event, uh, they don't want there to be too many people. It seemed, you know, not, they wanna offer everyone, but almost where you would go to somebody in Tim's office and register their trailer and truck so that if there's a deputy, they know that they have the permit or the approval to stay overnight, maybe limit it to so many people the first time and then the next time if other people wanna do it. So it's something, you know, I, I would just probably say put a formal request up for a day or.
Is that, is that, um, sorry, uh, is, is that mostly on weekends? Because I remember when I would go down to the arena, it would be a Saturday and Sunday, and to haul your trailer back to your farm and, and unload them. If you stay, that cuts down on a lot of, of traveling, especially for the horses. Is that what you're talking about? That's quite fine.
I think that's what they are.
Okay.
Steve, the girl, would be absolutely, he's the head of the, the whole shit.
Yeah.
He would be the one, but usually that's what I understand would be just like the weekend thing. I don't know if they would wanna do it during the week, but I think what you're suggesting is, is great if they just get a hold of Tim.
And I'll continue to work on it.
And to speak for Dan, he kinda waved at us, said he had somewhere to go. I know that Steve talked to him yesterday and they're working on getting a list of the things that we talked about last week for DPW, start working on the, the easy things, the tiles and everything.
Oh, yeah.
So he's still in contact with Steve about that.
Okay. Was there any resolution as to moving it? Or we're kinda still in the process, okay?
I, I haven't heard from, yeah, from, I think he had the geo engineer.
Um, and I see Jerry here, do you wanna wait for a little bit or you're gonna talk about veterans on this, assuming?
Whatever you'd like.
Okay, well, um, you, you can go now, uh, if you'd like to have a conversation.
Well, the reason I'm here is that articles have been in the paper the last couple of weeks. And I, I know the person that started this with you, um, the letters that you've got, I don't, I never saw the letter itself, but I know the back of it. And I called that person back in March or April to remind her of goodness that she didn't know what she was talking about. But she's a friend and she's written with us before, but she has a heart that sometimes, anyhow. Yeah, the program works. There are three of us that are drivers, two of us basically here all the time, one, one driver goes away for the winter. I've talked to all three of them, myself, I didn't talk to myself, but anyhow, I am speaking for all three drivers. And if, if you, whoever, decide that you're gonna put a paycheck or a slant or whatever you wanna call it on the table in front of us, all three of us will quit. And then you leave drivers with your program. We don't do this for any other reason, we give back to our fellow veterans. And all three of us just happen to be veterans in this case. And the best of my knowledge, most of the other drivers before me have all been veterans. The program does not require that you be a veteran, but it does just happen to be the way it's worked out. Going back to one fellow, Pat's ninety, Pat Cody, ninety-four years old, drove years ago, so this has been going on for some time. I just happened to have gotten into it about five years ago after I retired from within the spam. You wanna pass blind drivers, 'cause you won't have drivers to drive. There have been issues, of course, with cancellation, as, as the paper said, but it's not been many. I was out of action for a couple of months and, and so did put a strain on, on Ken, who was here by himself. But, but all three of us are here. I was asked yesterday, when I come back, I think next Wednesday, they want me to take somebody up at five o'clock. My driveway is Tuesday. I said, hey, I'm just drinking beer and I'm driving.
At the same time, Jerry, just to clarify.
But, uh, anyhow, I mean, we get in there, um, we've taken people up on Sundays and Wednesdays and Fridays. And I take, I have taken, uh, one fellow up to Pittsburgh, uh, on Wednesday evening, 'cause he had to be there by eight o'clock. So I'm not a fan of this. We've always done it this way, we'll keep doing it this way, but please don't walk the boat. Uh, I think the boat is doing just fine. But to another issue that was in the paper with the, the three satellite offices, um, living here in the Beaver area, if I have an event, then I came to, came to the courthouse. Many years ago, there was a need for those offices. I'm not so sure that there is today. I don't know enough about what they do or don't do. I've talked to some other veterans who think the way I do, and maybe it's time to look at phasing them out, not just closing them, but their time may have come and gone. And when Eleanor and Hannah and Amber, which here that I'm saying this, they're gonna punch me in the nose that I'm not gonna see them because those two ladies I do happen to know and have worked with them and I, I stop to see them occasionally on, not veteran personal stuff, but the drop-in literature and things like that. So maybe there is a reason for them, but I, I don't see it myself. You say it's costing money, maybe that money would be better allocated to help the office downstairs. One of these days, Captain Aaron is gonna decide to retire. And I don't know none of my goodness really, but just throw this out, or any of the three ladies down there, when they step up and take, take her job, are they prepared to do that? And maybe it's time to reach out and find a younger person, um, preferably a veteran, because the mindset would be there to come in and start, I'm in the training, maybe in that office, to take over when Sandy or when, uh, when Kathy decided to retire. Let's not wait till, till it's too late to figure this out. I mean, there was a little, uh, the issue with Bill Munn's left, um, and, and as I recall, and so Kathy was there. Kathy had been working for years and years and years, um, in the VA system. So it was not a, a big switch, but I do believe they had to be qualified or certified to be, to hold that job. So I'm just suggesting that maybe that's where you need to go with that and just start looking down the road prepared, okay?
You and I had had some lengthy conversations this past week, and I appreciate the time that you've given me to understand what this is about. Because receiving the letter from a citizen on the outside, I like to always, um, address it and make sure that we're doing the right thing. And what I learned was, was very interesting, um, and I've had several veterans call me. And, um, one of the things is that was brought to my attention was that we need to pull that advisory committee, and I see Jesse is here, um, and he's on the advisory committee, um, and to kind of get a sense of what's their responsibility, what are they tasked to do, and, um, kind of direct them or help them in their way, uh, so.
Well, who is Ben which is talking?
The, the advisory committee.
Oh, okay.
It, they haven't had any direction or purpose so far. And I think that there's, there's a need to, and that was one of the people on the advisory committees. Uh, the advisory committee had mentioned that to me, and I think that's a really good idea. And, um, having these conversations are how this gets resolved, and for that I'm grateful.
Well, I would add that there's probably fifteen thousand veterans in Beaver County from old to young. With only three of us qualified to drive at the moment, surely in the veterans committee, there's gotta be one more that would step forward and, and get qualified and be there in reserve if, if needed. Because I said, oh, you don't have to be a veteran to drive. I'm gonna be here in Beaver County.
Bless you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I'm connected with Ron.
I'll take it.
That's Ron Williams. If you don't have to be a veteran to drive, surely within the, within our county, there's gotta be a person who's with us, so we could, and place into this, into this program. It was mentioned in the paper, it was a little bit of nonsense you gotta go through. I jokingly say the only thing I remember from going to school at the Buckle was how to wash my hands. I mean, come on. But, uh, yeah. So, you know, if, if, if the right publicity, maybe, or without paying, surely all these people that walk up to the veterans and say, thank you for your service, I, I really hired you here myself, and I took, I mean, just wanted to thank you for the vacation. But there's gotta be somebody out there in Beaver County that could step forward, would step forward and just be available, that's all.
Thank you for everything that you contributed, I really appreciate it. When you said I, I would quit, you stunned me. And you heard that silence on the phone and I, so I am really glad that we had that conversation.
There are other places, other counties that come out of West Virginia, drivers do get paid. They're driving five days a week, they're driving, uh, commercial vehicles hired by the VA system there because they don't have, maybe what we have available, I, I've never bothered to inquire.
Well, the letter came with a research from other counties, so, um, I can hand that to you. As well as we have the, um, reports, monthly reports from the satellite offices on the claims that they handle. And from my recollection, um, the county services about seven hundred and fifty claims per month, whereas the satellite office is generally, um, service about fifty to seventy-five claims per month. So you can see there's almost eight times or nine times the amount of traffic we get here in the courthouse. And, um, you know, not that cutting services is where you wanna be. You wanna make sure that you're utilizing everything properly.
Well, when an office is established, I mean, we will, of course, money maybe, the name, cell phones and computers and, and plenty of transportation. So again, do we need those three places? Because, okay, so if Amber's had one, well, where about me, where about Conway? I mean, if you say that Amber's the magnum, well, watch out at the courthouse, just be the magnum for the county. And again, phase them out, right, and improve what's available downstairs. If one more service person down there, I think, could probably take care of it.
San, Giorgiana, I hope all township. I, I benefit from, uh, the ride to Pittsburgh with the, uh, VA van. And, and another thing they do, they offer, they give us a six dollar ticket, a food ticket. It's McDarnally, we don't go hungry. I just wanna let you know, you know, additional to what he said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any?
Just listening, thank you. I'll try and spur up some interest for volunteers, because I totally agree with what Fred said. If we had three more people qualified, even if they're not steadily working, just as backups, that would be huge.
Move to the commissioner's report. You have a thing?
That's, that's, I was gonna talk.
Yep, that's all right. The only two things I have is, uh, the board signed off a couple of months ago on, uh, converting a conference room across from Judge DeHeen's, uh, courtroom into a, um, child-friendly room for the children's new services, 'cause, uh, they hold all the children's court for Judge DeCosta. They're starting to work on it now. I think DPW, I, I walked by and I saw the tables out in the paints, so they're starting to work on it. The other side thing is, was the hillside on twelve.
Hill twelve.
Hill twelve, I guess was what we call it. I think that's what Dan's dealing with today, uh, or law department deemed an emergency. There's a right-of-way to a house, uh, and we had, uh, proper engineers come out and evaluate the situation, and they agreed.
Yeah, it's, it, the property owner who lives up there, it, is their sole access to the residency.
One way in and one way out.
And.
It's a small club.
They have, we're, they have. In, in, in addition, there is the danger that if we get more rain, that this hillside could even deteriorate further. So we have deemed it an emergency. DPW's out there with a contractor right now, looking at it, trying to get the hill stabilized and get it repaired.
And I had mentioned that, um, we have learned from the gas line out in the Alacqua exit that hillsides and slides, um, District eleven, Pendott is dealing with a lot of slides, that having that geotechnical firm is kind of the, the area in which they specialize. So that's really important, and Dan said that that's what was happening with, with that.
Other than that, I don't have anything, I think we'll be doing.
I think the other thing, I guess we should point out with that is, I believe it's called Shelter Twelve up there. At least for the next couple of weeks, it's not going to be accessible. Tim Mishman is gonna be reaching out to the people who have already rented it, letting them know and trying to get them moved to a different shelter.
I, I was sitting beside, um, the director of, uh, District eleven, that's where we're, right? Pendott, about the lands, the other landslides in Brady's Run that were down to one lane. She said that there's so many landslides that they don't, they don't have enough money to get to them. And what they're, what they're looking at first are the emergency ones, the truck traffic and the school bus and the emergency routes. So those are the things that are coming first. And she said the park may be down on that list a little bit because of the emergency evacuations and the, you know, the hospitals and the school buses, and that's how they kind of tiered them.
Hearing nothing else, we'll be having an executive session tomorrow after, we'll call for it after our public voting. We need to discuss, I mean, it's some litigation.
There's some personnel matters, um, that's made some litigation as well, so. Anything else?
Do we have anything on unions negotiations?
We've received proposals, um, from two of the unions that are currently outstanding. We are going to meet internally on July eighth with Corey, John McCreary, to discuss those proposals and see what to do from there.
Hearing nothing else, for adjourned.
How about public?
Oh, oh boy, see? Thank you, Mr. Molly.
I hate to come back to a subject that we had, but since I couldn't talk about it, then this energy consultation that you're going through, is that something we pay for? Is that something that they are doing? How did that come about?
So what this company does, there's a program through the state. They're doing what they're, they're calling an audit. In reality, what it is, they're, they're governing through and they're looking at the utility usage, the energy efficiency of the various buildings throughout that the county owns. What will happen is that through that process, they're gonna bring to the county proposals of upgrades that can be done that the county would pay for, that the anticipation would be through savings, through utility bills, that they would offset themselves or the county could, in a way, end up ahead. So to answer your question directly, it's ultimately gonna be the county that's gonna be paying for it, but the hope and the anticipation is that the county is going to save money. And this company, the way we're being told, they're gonna do these projections, and if it, the projections don't meet what they say it will, they'll make up the difference.
So this is not something that we're paying under contract?
Not right now.
Until that report comes in.
Correct, and then that, that report will analyze what options there are and go from there.
Thank you.
Any other audience participation?
Which hillside are you gonna work on, Alacqua, is one of them, off of fifty-one? Which, uh, hillside are you gonna work on, Alacqua is one of them, off of fifty-one?
That's a municipal road.
Oh, that's a municipal.
Yeah, we need to park Alacqua.
That's a Pendott.
Well, I don't believe Pendott's gonna go, because it's a municipal road.
I don't either, they said they were asking Pendott for help. Now, where are these major slides?
Well, they're, one, the one that I was referring to in Brady's Run is like the first or second turn in Brady's Run.
Ankers Town Road.
Yeah.
What is it?
Ankers Town Road is.
Oh, okay.
That's a, uh, that's a Pendott road as well. The one we're fixing is a county-owned road, it's Hillside Twelve.
Hillside Twelve.
Across from the, uh, bonehouse, I think.
Oh.
Wonder how it got this name?
Who's up next after Hillside Eleven?
I'm wondering where that was. You got it, though.
There's no clarification, Danny.
Any other audience participation? Hearing none, who will adjourn, we have our public meeting tomorrow. Thank you.